Called order the city council meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. The city clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Fetter.
Here.
Dale Helms, Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
President.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does term call, please stand for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to this republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items required in council action may refer to staff, boards, and commissions for research and future council decisions if appropriate. They may want to address the council on items not on the current agenda. See none. Move on to approval minutes for May 17th council meeting, May 24th special meeting, May 24th perk session, and minutes summary of the May 24th closed meeting. Move. By Riappel.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes. Motion is carried. Schedule of bed lettings, there's none. Move on to scheduled public hearings. Approving hearings for 2022 assessment job number two for proposed street and utility improvement project on Fourth Street Northeast and change a motion to open public hearing. Move. By Larson.
Second.
Taken by Fetter. Well, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is the improvement hearing for a potential street and utility improvement project on Fourth Street Northeast. The intent of tonight's meeting is for basically the city council to hear from the affected property owners, you know, prior to even moving ahead, ordering, preparation of any plans and specifications. So at this time, there has been no decisions made in regards to, you know, if the project, you know, will move forward. And again, if the project would move forward, the improvement hearing is really just one step which needs to be followed in the assessment process. The city had received a petition from one of the property owners, you know, requesting these improvements, and that's why we moved ahead with completing the report of feasibility and why we're now conducting the improvement hearing. I will acknowledge the city did receive today, just today, a letter from Folsom Farms, basically, you know, stating that they do not feel that a portion of the road would maybe need to be completely repaved, could maybe redeceive some patching type of work. So just want to acknowledge that, you know, the council, city did receive that. So again, the project area that we're, you know, discussing is shown here in green. So basically, it's on Fourth Street Northeast from Fifth Avenue Northeast, basically up to American Crystal property there, basically right at Eighth Avenue. So what do we know about Fourth Street? So the existing concrete street was put in in the mid-'70s, so it's approximately 46 years old. The street is in very poor condition with complete failure of the street, especially towards the easterly end of it there. The concrete's totally deteriorated. I think the city's even had to patch it in the past just to kind of try to maintain some traffic there. The storm sewer basically was put in at the same time. At this time, we have figured basically replacing the catch basins, the storm sewer leads. There is some fairly large storm sewer in there, so the city is going to televise that just to see the condition, you know, maybe see, maybe it's even a candidate for just some relining or something too. So at this time, in the cost estimates that have been prepared, you know, replacement of that large line was not figured at this time. So the project scope, again, we were figuring basically total reconstruction, which would include complete removal and replacement of the existing concrete street, driveways, and there is some sidewalk over there. Again, the project would include replacement of storm sewer leads, catch basins. The road would be corded out with a new aggregate base with GeoGrid fabric put down and drain tile. And then we would be looking at putting in, you know, either B-624 curb and gutter, or I did have a question from one of the properties about doing, you know, maybe a mountable style curb over there, which probably makes some sense in an industrial park area too. So and again, right now, you know, just trying to follow the city's sidewalk ordinance and stuff. And there is some existing sidewalk along the north side of Fourth, so we did figure replacing a little bit of sidewalks there that's at the east end, but then extending it all the way over to Fifth Avenue Northeast. So there would be, you know, a sidewalk connection, at least from Fifth, over to American Crystal. Project funding, really, we're looking at two funding sources. We got assessments, which would pay for the street improvement costs, and then the storm sewer replacement costs. Those costs would be basically picked up by the city utilizing the enterprise funds. So, you know, what are assessments? You know, for those who are not familiar, they're basically a method the city uses to pay for projects. An assessment project is, it's a method the city uses to pay for the projects directly benefiting properties. And assessments are filed with the county and paid with your, you know, county taxes. Typically, for street projects, typically those have been assessed over a 20-year timeframe. Assessments can be prepaid before they were ever submitted to the county, or, you know, even once they have been submitted to the county, you know, you can prepay, pay them off at any time without any penalties. So the assessments are calculated on a front and end footage. So when we looked at this project, again, the green is basically the project area. So on the north side of Fourth Street, you know, that was figured as a front footage. And then basically along Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth, again, we calculated those on an end footage basis. So once we, you know, come up with the total footages, then we basically, to calculate the assessment rate, we take that total, the total project cost divided by, you know, the total front footage, and then we use one-third of the end footage. So that's how we calculate what the front footage assessment rate is. And then the end benefit assessment rate is basically one-third of the front assessment. So right now, we're looking at a total project cost of about $892,503.32. Of that, $792,612.12 is what we're looking at assessing. Again, the difference between those two numbers is the storm sewer costs that the city would pick up. So then using that $792, using the footages for front and end benefits, you know, we come up with an estimated assessment rate of $466.66 for front foot benefit. And again, the end benefit is one-third of that, so $155.44. So again, kind of next steps, you know, just based on feedback the council receives tonight. The city council will then decide if they want to move ahead with, you know, preparation of plans and specs to, you know, receive bids. And then as far as, you know, like I said, this is really one step in the assessment process. There is a final assessment hearing also, and the city council has, you know, done that two different ways in the past. You know, we have, once we receive bids, we've held that final assessment hearing, and then based on, you know, feedback the council would get at that time, then they decide if they're going to move ahead with the project. Or, you know, if the council's comfortable with the project, everything seems to be good. You know, we have gone ahead, completed the project, so we know all of the final construction costs, and then held that final assessment hearing at that time. So really, at this time, couple options there. So I think with that, you know, we'll just kind of turn it over to you guys if you have any specific questions for me or the council.
Anybody has any questions? I'd like them to come up front and state their name, the address, if they'd like to. If you have any questions, do so at this time. Have questions from Mr. Emery or the council, if you want to. Come up there and state your name and the address.
Derek Schmidt, I'm the plant manager at MGI Grain. It's 316 Fifth Avenue Northeast. So our section of the road, I think, is that better area that you were talking about. It's not really too broken up or anything like that. So it's kind of a costly repair, I guess. So is it possible that it would be able to, like, not do our part, or?
I guess, you know, that's first we've heard that. You know, we'd have to actually go out there, probably reassess it a little bit, just to see if, you know, there's a way to scale down the project a little bit, I guess. You know, I know all of it's in tough shape. There's no doubt that far easterly end is, you know, by far the worst. But we'd have to look at that.
Okay.
Bring the map back up and show where that would be.
Basically, right here.
So if that would do that, I mean, wouldn't they still have front end stuff? I mean, how far would you even consider it?
Yeah, like MGI was basically getting, you know, basically just an end benefit up Fourth Street.
Seen a few cracks.
You know, we'd have to look how we would do that if we're gonna, you know, let's say we're gonna do some patching here and some full reconstruction here, you know, we'd have to just figure out maybe some alternate ways. How do you assess that at that point, you know?
I guess that's my question. I mean, if you scale back the project, I mean, to say Seventh and to the east, what does that do for the assessment of the whole project, then? I guess that's my question.
And I think if the council wants to look at that, we, you know, just have to kind of go back to the drawing board a little bit, see what, you know, how we could, you know, we really got two different types of projects there almost, and then how, you know, how do you assess that? That's fair to everybody, too, so.
Reason I ask that, too, is just, let's say you want to scale back the road work, but we find out actually the catch basins and whatever else in there is bad. I mean, how do you justify believing those?
Yeah. Yeah. A lot of the larger storm sewer, a lot of it is actually on the north side of Fourth in the berm. There is some, as you get to the westerly end of Fourth, that large storm sewer does actually kind of come back into Fourth Street. But, but yeah, I mean, you're correct. If we find out that some of that large storm sewer needs to be replaced, and you got the street door open anyway, then it only makes sense to, you know, probably do everything. But I'd have to take a look at more, I guess, the westerly half.
Okay.
You know, because we did kind of get the same question from you and Folsom's now, so I think it's just something we should look at.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions?
Randy Bushy with A&amp;L Potato Company. So we're the middle section there, which, you know, like Pearlengrain said, their section virtually is pretty good shape. Our section's in okay shape, and when you get further to the east, like what Steve said, it gets pretty rough. But, you know, I'm just afraid, is there other sewer work or things of that nature that needs to be done that's part of this project, or is it, because the concrete's off, you're going to do it at that point?
All of the water main sanitary sewer in that area is PVC, has been replaced, you know. So the only thing we really would have to just look at would probably be that storm sewer.
Okay. So there isn't, like, a utility aspect beneficial on this, really?
Right.
Okay.
No.
So I think for A&amp;L Potato's perspective, it's premature, but I do get that the east end of it's pretty busted up. And, you know, I just don't know if it's really, with all the inflationary aspects of things kicking in with $5.57 diesel fuel prices, is this estimate a locked-in cost, or is there a factor that that could go up to?
At this time, it's strictly an estimate, and we'd have to, you know, you'd have to prepare plans, get bids to really lock it in. So yes, at this point, it's an estimate.
From A&amp;L Potato's perspective, I think it's premature. But, you know, there is definitely some wear on them roads. I mean, I'm not questioning it, but it's not a driving hazard. You get down to the east end, yeah, that's, it needs some work.
I think from about Seventh here to American Crystal, I mean, that section right through there, that's totally shot.
Yeah, it's got a, but, you know, the edges, the parking lanes are fine, just the center driving lane, which I think it contributes to a lot of tailings coming out of there, you know. Even on Sixth, the center is kind of crowded out on where Sixth and Fourth meets.
Right.
There's some patchwork that would have to be done in that intersection. I mean, you know, it's definitely seen some traffic in its life, so. But is it the right time today to do it? I'm not positive of that. We'd like the inflation to go back down, and then we'll do it. Or we want everything to come up to match the inflationary numbers, you know. But right now, it's kind of a lopsided thing. Your income doesn't match the inflationary numbers.
Yeah, and as I looked at kind of what's there for, you know, even a typical section, it could probably use a little more aggregate base just for stability. So that's, you know, again, why, you know, if we're going to redo it, it'd be nice to kind of get a good gravel base section across the entire street width there to sort of uniform, but.
Yeah, yeah. And I did see they put a little tar patch at one time down on the eastern end, you know, which I don't know if there's anything really to patch onto there. You almost got to re-put concrete in there to fix it.
You do, yeah.
So that's our opinion. And I did talk to Brian, and he was kind of thinking a patch job would be better served at this point, but from Folsom Farms, I don't know if Brian ever reached out to you.
Brian never reached out to me, but yeah, we did get, we did receive kind of the letter from him.
Oh, okay.
Yep, just got that today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Johnson?
Steve, what is this catch basin, mountain, what did you call it?
The what?
Mounted?
Oh, mountable curb.
What is that?
It's basically just a, almost like a driveover curb. You know, it's not the curb like you see in your residential development where it's got more of the vertical face. This has more of almost like a 45-degree angle on the curb, so you can basically just drive up, up on it and over it, you know. The benefit is when we do, like, the B-style curb, you know, anywhere you got a driveway, you got to kind of cut that back down. Where the mountable curb, they basically would just have a plate on their curb machine, and they would just go along and, you know, just put it in. It's all a driveover curb, essentially.
See them in roundabouts quite a bit, right?
What's that?
See them in roundabouts quite a bit?
Yeah. And actually, if you went over to Seventh Avenue Northeast right now, when that was redone 10 years ago, probably now, that all has mountable curb.
I didn't understand. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything? Not entertain a motion to close public hearing? Move. By Johnson?
Second.
Second by Riappel. In favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Pose, same sign. Motion is carried. The public hearing is now closed. Move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members, we request individual items to be polled for discussion if they choose. Anyone want six through nine polled? If not, undertake motion of six through nine. Move. By Riappel.
Second.
Taken by Johnson. Questions and discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes. Motion is carried. Knowledge and receipts of reports to officers, boards, and commissions. Regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission from May 4th, 2022, and May 18th, 2022. Communication, there's none. Old business, there is none. Move on to new business. Consider adopting resolution number 22-06-44, authorizing the city administrator to distribute the request proposal to identified bridge consultants. Is there a motion? Move. By Larson.
Second.
Second by Demers. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to number 12. Consider adopting resolution 22-06-45, ordering improvement and reparation of plans and specifications for 2022 assessment job number two, street and utility improvements for Fourth Street Northeast. Demers? Zero second.
I'll second it with the provision that maybe they should look at the west half, maybe.
First, we have motion at hand right now, proving the way it is represented. Move. Second by Riappel. Questions and discussion? Mr. Johnson, you want to address that this time?
All I wanted to say was if these people came forward or whatever, we should maybe take a, I don't know if the council could go and look at the road, but I think Mr. Emery does a good job, but, you know, maybe they can save some money.
We'll take a look at it, and, yeah.
That was my concern. Thank you.
Yep. You have motion as presented in a second, so, just so you know. Vote yes, you're voting the way it is presented tonight. If you vote no, that means we're rejecting to have them look at it unless you want to amend your motion.
The preparation of plans is contingent on condition, right? I mean, if you go and look at it, you're not going to present a plan that doesn't reflect what you see. I mean, yeah, I mean, our recommendation now, just knowing what's there for base and stuff, you know, you put in a bituminous patch, I mean, that's going to be a temporary fix, too, you know. The right way to fix it is you got to get probably some better gravel base section there for long-term stability. You know, and the hard part is, too, you know, you can start piece-mealing these projects, everything else, but, you know, you do get better pricing, too. The bigger project, you can do, you kind of get that, you know, benefit of scale from a larger project, so.
My ask is then if we vote yes on it, and you give us the whole project, but are also, are you going to look at the shortened version project of only doing portions of it and patching?
We can look at that, yeah.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I guess what I'm hearing is, you know, we go out there, we look at this concrete road, and we look for a line where west of this line, this pavement could stay in place as is. East of this line, this pavement is destroyed, needs to be replaced. And then we figure out a smart way to assess that responsibly. You know, the east end obviously would be assessed more towards the eastern property owners. West end would have less, so. That's what I'm hoping to see, is this analysis is done, and then we talk about it either at a council meeting or a work session to define the scope. But 50% of the property owners have said, we don't want to pay for this whole road.
Right.
So I hear that loud and clear.
Mayor?
Could there be a section, Brian, to your, to your point, could there be a section that would be some degree of repair? So you have full replacement here, you could leave it alone here, and then maybe an area of some degree, even if you had to take out something and come in with some compacted material to make it a little better temporary fix, maybe five more years or whatever.
Yeah.
So maybe there would be that intermediate section also.
And I, yeah, I would like, to be honest with you, I'd like to go take a look at it again. Because like, Mr. Bushy said, you know, probably between Seventh and Sixth, you know, you might be looking at all the center panels there, but then you get, you know, from Sixth going east or Seventh going east, it's going to be complete reconstruction there. So, you know, I guess, to be honest with you, you know, at this point, this is not going to happen this year. So, I mean, if you want to hold off, I can report back to you. Totally up to you.
I guess, in my mind, if I'm going to vote yes on it, I want the possibility of looking at other options on it, too. That's where I'm at.
Yeah.
I mean, with the people that spoke, the letter that we got, I want to be able to be able to present that to the owners, the businesses there, and say, this is what we can do.
Yeah.
Because you voiced your opinion.
Yep.
And we want to make sure that we're listening to the constituents, the business owners. So that's where I'm at.
I guess procedurally, then, the question would be, to get to that objective, are you better off to approve this action or to turn it down and go back and do the research? That's the real question. I think we agree. We want to come up with that intermediate plan. Are we better off accepting and then adding, or are we better off turning this one down and then creating the one that we're talking about?
Guess that's the question I need to ask Mr. Murphy. Mr. Holstead?
I can start with that. Thank you, Council President. I think at this point, since what we're, what we have before us here is a resolution to ordering the improvement and the preparation of plans and specifications. So for the preparation of plans and specifications, we haven't done a final assessment roll yet. We haven't ordered the project. We're looking at preparing the plans and specifications. I think there's enough openness to that, that the council can approve this as it is put forward with the discussion and the direction that the council has given to the engineer to look at those items and bring it back. So it would be my opinion that we wouldn't need to necessarily deny this and make a new motion with that. I think we, I think the council has given the engineer enough direction that he can bring those options back.
I don't disagree with that. My attorney said that.
Shortest I've ever heard.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 13, consider adopting resolution 22-06-46, approving the year-end transfers for budget year 2021. Is there a motion? Move. Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Fetter. I do have a question. On the sheet that was given us today, they had the listings of all the transfers, reason, the amounts transferred from what account to the other account. There's a listing here that for roughly about $922,000, almost $923,000. When do these normally get transferred? And why is this in June of 2022 coming to us now for transferring of 21?
Okay, this is done typically every year with our audit, and we are in, we're not in the middle of the audit. We have submitted all the numbers to our auditors, but they are still doing a few analytical testing that they're required to do, and then they'll be putting the financial statement together. And so we don't give you these numbers until the audit is done or near completion so that we know they're correct. And that's actually why there was a couple of numbers, had to give you new ones, because there was one missed that the auditors came up with and said, okay, this is a transfer. And to explain, I know somebody asked me about transfers, and the reason we have to do transfers is because you can't just send money from one fund to the other. If you notice, the money's going to separate funds. So the only way you can transfer that money is through a transfer, because if you do it with a revenue and expense, you're double dipping for, you're counting revenues twice, you're covering expenses twice. So the accounting proper way to do it is a transfer. So that's why we have the listing of it. Any other questions? Did I explain that okay, or?
Can you explain the 21 CP3 transfer?
21 CP3.
Civic car, sales tax.
Oh, okay. And that is for the compressor. That, you know, we're doing the compressor right now at the Civic Center, and we know it's, what, $389 or something? Is that about right? And we know we have a grant for about $165 for Mighty, $125, I think, from, help me with the name. Mighty Dykes, Mighty Ducks. And so the remaining amount, we decided, and I know we brought it to you guys, was that it would come out of the sales tax that was left over from the pool.
We voted on it.
So that way, it would stay with Park and Recs, that money would stay with Park and Rec projects.
How much is left in the sales tax?
Uh, there's about $199. Because I think it was about three ninety-nine when we, yeah.
Be done, Mr. Murphy, sorry.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Roll call, please.
Riafelle?
I have to.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
I think I have to, it's already published as a voting yes, so, yes.
Well, no, our, our audit is not done, so.
Larson?
Yes.
Better.
Yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Postade. Number fourteen, consider approving the on sale weekday liquor license applications for first glance event design located at thirteen oh one Central Avenue Northwest, East Grand Oaks, Minnesota, five six seven two one.
Move.
By Riafelle.
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Riafelle?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number fifteen, consider adopting resolution twenty-two dash zero six dash four-seven, appointing the election judges for the primary and general elections in twenty twenty-two.
Move.
By Johnson. Second by Better. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Riafelle?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better.
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to claims. Consider authorizing the city administrator clerk treasurer to issue payment of rec bills and payroll. By Larson. Second by Riafelle. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Riafelle?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better.
Yes. Motion is carried. Mayor Gander?
Couple of things. First of all, um, it's going to come out in conversation here more and more as we finish our plans on how to use our federal sub-target dollars. Um, we do have a couple of projects that are still under consideration for those dollars, and that should take place in the year, say, twenty thirteen. It has to take place by then for us to fully utilize those dollars. Um, the two projects that are still being looked at, and we just like the people to know about it, a lot of these things, conversations take place at a staff level, and, and details are being hammered out, and it's just nice for the folks to know what we're working on. Um, of course, Tenth Street Northeast, the street that runs between the abandoned railroad tracks and the industrial park, going east and west into the industrial park, that's a project being looked at, as well as the roundabout that prospectively could go at Bigland and Reinhardt Drive. Those two projects are both still moving forward with planning, both moving forward with cost assessments and some of the other procedural hoops that have to be jumped through to get them to completion. Those are both high priorities for us, um, and some on the council have them as a higher priority than others. And, um, and so those two projects are, are both moving forward favorably on the council. Um, I'm thankful that we got it nailed down for the HOCS system at Thirteenth. I do always say, and I mean it, that the pedestrian safety at Thirteenth is the number one concern that I have along, along Bigland Road as of right now. It's going to, it's going to get more congested as more homes are built, and, and we'll have some other concerns later on. Um, but for right now, I'm very thankful. In the last couple of weeks, I have been traveling back out to Boise, Idaho, and also to Minot, North Dakota. Both cities have HOCS systems at intersections. So the state of Idaho, the state of North Dakota, and, um, so they're, they're common, and they work really well. As your car approaching, they act, of course, just like a light turning yellow, turning red. You come to a stop until the light allows you to go again. They work really well. And finally, thanks to our Parks and Rec staff, because I've been down on the trails again, having returned from my Western Road trip, and you all are cleaning off the trails even as they come up above the floodwaters. So as soon as there's a patch or trail sticking up above the water, the, the logs are cleaned off and, and folks are able to pass. So thanks for staying on top of that, and pretty soon we'll have our, our whole trail system back. Get out and enjoy it. Thanks.
Better.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Murphy, uh, on the next work session, I'd like to talk about our ATV ordinance and our golf cart ordinance. I'm getting a lot of complaints from citizens about young individuals that are tearing down the roads and not obeying speed limits. I'd like to know how many ATV permits have been issued? And let us just take a look at that again to see if it's appropriate ordinance, or do we need to amend it.
Did I catch, did you say the, was there a second part without, did you just say ballpark ordinance?
Golf cart.
Oh, golf cart.
I don't know if they're one and the same, or if they're two separate.
Thank you.
He sounds like he's one of them.
Riafelle?
I agree with Mr. Better. I've heard the same issues. Uh, I heard of a razor going down the road at seventy miles an hour in town with five kids in it. Um, not a good thing. Uh, something happens, they're going to have five kids in, in the hurt bag.
People licensed, neither one of them or any of them had the driver's license yet.
Right, exactly. I heard the same one. Um, also, I'd like to say, the senior center recently had their annual meeting. Um, everything went quite well. Uh, Mayor, I know he couldn't come, you were gone, so was Mr. Olstead, so I went for you. We had, uh, two individuals come off the board. We found one replacement, we're still looking for another. Um, they're serving upwards of ninety meals a day now, on average, and on certain days, it's over a hundred. And they're in need of help. They're shorthanded. They've got some volunteers, but, uh, things need to change, or we're going to have to make a change to what we're doing out there.
That's good.
So, you know.
About ninety, um, in-house and, um, delivered.
There's like two or three in-house, the rest are all deliveries, and they're delivered by basically volunteers.
Johnson?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Demers? Yeah, I just want to say thanks to all the Parks and Rec staff, on the volunteers and parents with all the great summer programs, off to a great start, so, really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Again, does the pool open tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Pools open tomorrow? What hours again do they normally?
Yeah, opens at one o'clock.
Seven o'clock tomorrow. Maybe the mayor can take time and go jump in the water or something. Um, thanks again, yeah, I think everybody said it, thanks for getting the stuff off the trails. I mean, there's a lot of mud everywhere. Uh, I know that's been a job. Um, getting everything mowed because of where the water was is another challenge. I appreciate everybody doing that, staff, so. Mr. Murphy, you have anything?
I just have a couple of items tonight, I'll try to make them real quick. First one is, I did get a chance to meet an individual by the name of Brian Dorff. He is the, uh, taken, taken over as the president of the Remote Control Flyers Association. Though, um, Tom Stennis used to be the president, so Tom has stepped aside and let him take over, and so he was in, wanted to introduce himself, and it looks like they are looking at, they want to do some upgrades to the site out there that they get to use, um, for enjoyment, those types of things. So he'll be working with us this summer, um, and it looks like they would, they're not looking at anything from the city at this time, other than permission, they're, they have grants, individual donations, those types of things that they're looking at for funding those. Um, and the other item is that, uh, on, uh, June twenty-first, which would be after our next city council meeting, uh, we talked about doing the goal-setting and visioning sessions quarterly, so we're, we're due for that again, so I have not determined the place yet. I'm going to try to spread those around a little bit, but as soon as I get a place set up, I will let you know. We should meet after the council meeting.
Please say the date again, David.
Uh, June twenty-first, two weeks from tonight.
No PTO indication.
Those are quarterly one?
Quarterly, yep.
So they'll be one quarter long?
Sure. That's all I have.
Mr. Goldstead?
Uh, nothing, unless there's questions for me.
Mr. Emery?
Um, Op Construction has completed the paving project on Sawgrass Court. That was open this morning, so hopefully we got some happy residents over there. Um, and then I guess, for those that you haven't seen, Op Construction did start on the ADA work, um, on Second Avenue by, um, Riverside Christian School, so.